I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation under God, with the great and just as long. Please remain standing. Join me in a moment of silence for Rachel Quinn, a teacher from Brentwood and Hough Hough grad who unfortunately passed away. Again.
At this time, I'd like to ask our two newly elected board members to step forward to be sworn in. Are you board members or colleague Capici and Gemma Salvia?
I, Capici, do solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Gemma?
I, Gemma Salvia, do solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
At this time, I would like to inform the nominations to elect a new Board of Education president.
Nominate Mr. Barshay.
Mr. Barshay, are there any other nominations? Okay, can I have a motion to approve Mr. Barshay as the president? Mr. Scrito, second. Mr. Fortmeyer, motion carries. All in favor? Six zero?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Barshay to step forward to be the head of the board president.
I, Mr. Barshay, do solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. I will call for nominations for the election of a vice president. I will nominate Mr. Scrito. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Scrito as vice president? Any opposition? Extentions? Six zero. Congratulations. Is there an over for him, or he gets a pass?
I, Rob Scrito, do solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools according to the best of my ability.
Yes.
Number seven on the agenda is the appointment of the district clerk. The motion is to designate Lori DeGeorge as district clerk for the school year 2021-2022. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Scrito. Do I have a second? Thank you, Salvia. Discussion, just from the board's, really the president's opinion of Mr. George, and notwithstanding any other clerks of this district that are in attendance here. Lori, you are amazing and a godsend for the board. Thank you for your service, and I'm forward to continuing to work with you this upcoming year. Any other comments? All those in favor? Seven zero. Congratulations. I will administer the oath of office to the district clerk.
I, Lori DeGeorge, do solemn swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge duties of district clerk according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
At this point, the district clerk will administer the oath of office to superintendent of schools, Dr. Murphy.
I, Donald Murphy, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of schools according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, of Mr. George. Questions and comments from the community concerning tonight's reorganization? Reorganizational agenda only? Right, so the consent agenda for the reorg meeting is items ten through forty-four. Are there any items that members would like to have removed? I will remove forty-four, which is the appointment of board committees, and also twenty-four, which is conferences. Yeah. It's not on the agenda. Any other items members would like to have removed from the reorg consent agenda? With that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, less number twenty-four and forty-four. Thank you, Dr. Krafa. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Capici. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Number twenty-four on the consent agenda was severed by its conferences as to teachers as well as board members. I believe this reads as a, well, withdrawn, in one second. Do I have a motion concerning twenty-four? Thank you, Mr. Fortmeyer, Mr. Scrito, second discussion. This reads as a blanket approval for the attendance at conferences and meetings by all staff and board members. Is that accurate?
I believe so, yes.
So, yeah, my understanding is that the first part of this resolution requires superintendent approval for conferences, which I think is a good check and balance. However, the second part concerning Board of Education members, I think, is a little unwieldy, and that really doesn't give any kind of guidance for what committees or what conferences rather board members can attend. I'd rather handle those as they come up. We see something that we want to go to as a board or individually, that we vote on the approval of such at that time. So I'd like to amend the second part of twenty-four to include, actually, just to strike the second part of twenty-four, and we'll handle it on a per instance basis. Does anyone want to be heard on that? Does anyone feel differently on that? All right, so I'll make a motion to approve twenty-four, less the second half of that resolution, and move to strike the second half of that resolution from the agenda. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Scrito. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. I asked the clerk to make notation that the second half was struck, and a reminder that when conferences come up, the board will handle them on an individual basis. Number forty-four is the other item that I severed, which is the appointment to board committees. We have to seat these committees. So first of all, I'm going to abolish J, which is the Long Term Planning Committee, because I believe that committee has served its purpose and actually kind of been swallowed up at this point into the facilities committee, so it's a little redundant. We're also going to form two ad hoc committees. The first one is called the Whitmer Will Committee, and pursuant to prior discussion, that is going to be seated by Ms. Capici, Mr. Scrito, our new superintendent for business when that person is hired, Mr. Tasman, and Dr. Murphy. The purpose of that ad hoc committee will be to advise the board on the sale of Whitmer Will, again, that's called the Whitmer Will Committee. That committee will report to the board as the board sees fit. I'll appoint Ms. Capici as the temporary chair of that committee, and I ask her to hold a meeting for the purposes of appointing a permanent chair and to report back to the board who that permanent chair is. And then that ad hoc committee will be added to the agenda and will report to the board in total when we do our committee reports. The second ad hoc committee is the Curriculum and Instruction and Technology Committee. Is that the right? No, it's not. It is the Committee for the Hiring of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. That's an ad hoc committee for the purposes of advising the board on the position for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. That committee will be, that would be Mrs. Salvia, Rob Scrito, and Mr. Fortmeyer, as well as Dr. Murphy, and our superintendent for business, as well as Dr., sorry, Mr. Tasman, and Gary, you'll be appointed the temporary chair, asking to hold a meeting for the purposes of appointing a permanent chair and report back to the board with who that person is, and the committee will be asked to report to the board on a regular basis. So striking superintendent for business from that committee. I'll ask Dr. Murphy to let me know if there's any other administrators or central office staff that he wants on the committee, but other than that, the committee stands and will be in place until we hire the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. All right, the ordered committee was previously Mr. Kylie, Mr. Scrito, and Mr. Buscarino. I ask, Mr. Kylie, do you want to continue on that committee?
Yes.
And Mr. Scrito, do you want to continue on that committee?
Yes.
Does anyone else want to participate in the ordered committee? Ms. Capici, I think that's right of your alley, and we will appoint Mr. Kylie as the temporary chair for purposes of holding a meeting to elect a permanent chair and report back to the board on that issue. Board Policy Committee, I'm going to appoint myself to that committee. Does anyone else from the board want to be on that committee? You don't need to be. I will appoint myself as the temporary chair. Dr. Murphy and Mr. Tasman are also part of that committee, will hold a meeting to elect the permanent chair. Islip Town Board School Association Representatives Committee, Mr. Fortmeyer, you've done that in the past, Mr. Weisberg was the alternate. Do you want to continue?
I'd be willing to continue, but I would like to appoint a second person since we are typically underrepresented at that meeting in the school district.
Okay, so rather than an alternate, you want a second?
Second.
Any volunteers? Ms. Salvia, would you like to be on that committee?
Sure.
All right, so it's you and Gemma, okay?
And also, there's an open invitation to other board members. I'm busy today. And two other board members and two central office staff, too.
Okay. Thank you. Gary, just hold a meeting between you and Ms. Salvia, tell me who the permanent chair is, okay? Scaring Committee was me. I don't mind doing it again unless someone else wants to. Okay? HIV AIDS Committee was? HIV AIDS Committee was Dr. Krafa. Would you like to continue that?
Yes.
Code of Conduct Committee was Mr. Scrito and Ms. Weisberg. Mr. Scrito, do you want to continue that?
Yes, please.
Do I have a volunteer for the second person on that committee? Thank you, Ms. Salvia. And you'll, Mr. Scrito, you're temporary chair, hold a meeting, please, and to elect a permanent chair and report back to the board. Safety Committee was Mr. Buscarino and Mr. Fortmeyer. Gary, do you want to?
I would like to continue on that. Does that committee have members of the public? Representatives from each building?
School employees.
School employees and occasionally sub-accounts.
How does that get seated as far as the police, police with a fire?
How do they assign them to us? I don't know. Jackie was the chair of the meeting, so I think she, do you guys? I'm sorry, not Jackie. Pat is the chair of that meeting, so he would organize that.
Can you check out, check in with Pat? All right, so any other board members other than Gary want to be on the safety committee? Dr. Krafa, thank you. Dr. Krafa, you are appointed the temporary chair. I ask that you hold a meeting to elect a permanent chair and report back to the board. Facilities Committee was Dr. Krafa, Mr. Kylie, Mr. Barshay, and Mr. Fortmeyer was the alternate. Dr. Krafa, do you want to continue with that?
Yes.
Mr. Kylie?
Yes.
Anyone else? Ms. Capici? Thank you, and I will serve as alternate. Gary, you're off the hook. So Ms. Capici, you'll be appointed temporary chair of that committee. I ask that you hold a meeting for purposes of appointing a permanent chair and report back to the board. Curriculum Instruction and Technology was Mr. Fortmeyer and Ms. Weisberg. Mr. Fortmeyer, do you want to continue?
Yes.
Very good. Ms. Salvia?
Yes.
Does anyone else want to volunteer as well? You can have three if you want, if you don't need it. Okay, so that is Ms. Salvia and Mr. Fortmeyer. Ms. Salvia, you are the temporary chair of that meeting. I ask that you hold a meeting and temporary chair of that committee. I ask that you hold a meeting for purposes of appointing a permanent chair and report back to the board. Long Term Planning Committee, I said, is already disbanded. I ask that the clerk put committee reports every other meeting, I guess on the business meeting, whichever one you see fit. We should, the committee should be prepared to report to the board once a month. Okay, number, that concludes, I'm sorry, that concludes the consent agenda. It also concludes the annual reorg portion of the meeting. Now we have a public hearing, number forty-five on the agenda is a public hearing for the Code of Conduct. Who's running that? Mr. Tasman? It's on the agenda as a public hearing. My understanding is it's just a first reading?
Yes, we haven't, we didn't make any, the Code of Conduct Committee met, there were no changes to the current Code of Conduct, so as part of our reorg meeting we have tonight as a question and answer period, if there's any questions regarding the Code of Conduct.
Well, was the Code of Conduct given out to the community?
Code of Conduct is on our website. It's always on our website to review and it's used in all buildings, all staff, so yes.
And other than being in this agenda, did we publicize a public hearing concerning the Code of Conduct?
I believe, no, just always on the agenda.
So, Gene, is there any, Ormaski, does this need to be adopted today? Should we put it on the next agenda with notice to the community of its public hearing nature?
You could put it all right, believe, but I think there's a deadline for that reorg.
Okay, so I ask Mr. George, put forty-five on our next meeting, and let's make sure that the public is aware that there's a public hearing where they can ask questions about the Code of Conduct, and that copy of the Code of Conduct is on the website. I'll make a motion to table it for the next meeting. Mr. Scrito, second. Is all those discussions, are you all those in favor? Seven zero. That concludes the public hearing and begins the business portion of the meeting. Excuse me. Superintendent, update comments? Dr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Barshay. It's an honor and pleasure to speak tonight for the first time as superintendent of schools. My remarks will be brief, but I did want to reiterate my thanks to the board of ed for selecting me for this role, worked alongside five members of the board, welcoming junior members tonight. The last few weeks, I've had the pleasure of visiting the buildings as we wrapped up the school year. Awesome to attend different events, outdoor activities, award ceremonies throughout the district, and I can with teachers and students. A quick little anecdote, I was convinced to get into adult group at Brentwood. Mr. Gagliardi threw at me three times, did not bring me down. Second grade girl, I believe second grade, comes up with a broken arm, throws it one time and knocks me into the water. Happened to her parents recently, and they had a picture of it, it was fantastic, and I got knocked down probably ten more times by students, so that was, that was great. By the way, that was outdoors, beautiful day. Same with the graduation ceremonies, the moving up ceremonies. I think we learned a lesson this year about, you know, the way we may proceed in future years having these activities outdoors, and I did want to share with the community that we are close to finalizing a graduation video. I've seen a preview of it, it is unbelievable. That'll be shared with the community along with a link to the actual graduation itself, so there'll be two videos to preview, and I'll have that out to the community probably next week. Met with the admin team last week, we started talking about reflecting on the year, silver linings, thinking about next year. I'd also wanted to acknowledge the work that PPS has recently been doing. This is Bilske, who's here in the audience, helped around the end of discussion with his young, with parents, with teachers, just talking about the collaboration between parents and the district in support of students, and we will be continuing that work. And I will be sending just a more formal communication to parents through Parents Square next week, introducing myself, just sharing a little perspective, and I'll also invite parents to reach out to me if your schedules permit. Reach out to me, I'd love to have you in for a cup of coffee, you have to be approachable and available to all, so please take me up on that offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Number forty-seven on the agenda, adoption and minutes to the business community meeting of June eighth, 2021. I'll make the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Scrito, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes five zero two, Ms. Salvia and Ms. Capice abstaining. Forty-eight on the agenda, questions and comments? Question and answer period regarding tonight's agenda only. That takes us to the consent agenda for the regular meeting, are there any items that members would like to have removed from the consent agenda? I will remove forty-nine B and I will remove fifty-two A. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus forty-nine B and fifty-two A. Mr. Scrito, thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Kylie, discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Forty-nine B, certification of lead evaluators, I'll make a motion to table that to our next meeting, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scrito, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. I ask that the district clerk put that on the agenda for our next meeting at the end of this meeting. Fifty-two A, curriculum and instruction matters, CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Scrito, do I have a second? Mr. Fortmeyer, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes five zero two, Mr. Barshay and Ms. Capice abstaining. That concludes the consent agenda. There's no break in the agenda here, but fifty-three, I guess fifty-two entered the consent agenda, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so fifty-three policies, fifty-three A, policy thirty-two hundred, administrative organization revised. Mr. Tasman, tell us a little bit about this. Is this a first reading or something else?
It's considered a first reading, am I right, Gemma?
No, I think we're going to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is just a change of the language about that the deputy superintendent is in charge in the absence of the superintendent of schools.
It can't go straight to a second reading, it's got to go through a first reading unless it's an emergency, which I don't believe it is.
Do you want to table it?
No, no, I don't want to table it. First reading. It's a first reading.
You can't do it unanimously.
Yeah, but, Gene, I understand what you're saying, but we have a policy that makes it, yes, you can do it if it's unanimous, but I don't want to get into the situation where, wow. Does anyone want to waive our requirement? So I'll make a motion to waive the requirement, that policies have a first reading unless they're in urgency. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Waive it.
To waive it? To waive first reading, does anyone want to make a motion to waive first reading?
No.
So we're going to treat fifty-three A as a first reading. Any comments concerning policy thirty-two hundred? Don, what is this exactly? What are we doing here?
It's just a policy that memorializes which administrator is in charge in my absence to reflect the fact that that would be the deputy superintendent of schools.
It previously was the assistant superintendent for business.
That's correct.
So the policy just updates that to be the deputy, which will be Mr. Tasman, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, that policy will return to the policy committee and be proposed for a second reading and adoption at our next, at our next meeting. Discussion matters, we have new business, Ms. Salvia?
Just did, did any members of the superintendent boards cabinet take a look at universal pre-K? I know the received money is from New York State regarding that, so if you can get some feedback on that.
Yes, sure, I can provide a brief update there. We are working, the first step is an RFP, which is being finalized by the business office, depending on the response that RFP will know what our options are from there, so that's something that there's traction on and we will update the board and community as that RFP process plays out.
So for those of us that are dummies like me, what is the universal pre-K?
It's, well, it's having students who are, you know, four-year-old students attend school. There are districts that already have it in place, some have half-day, some have full-day. The implication with the monies that districts are slated to receive now, if you, if you did not have an existing pre-K program, which we don't, then to utilize the dollars, we would have to establish a full-day program, it cannot be anything less than that.
So does it become part of pre-K through twelve continuum or is it more like a scope?
It's more like a scope, yes.
So it would be optional for kids or it's?
Yes, well, there would be a lottery because we have a certain pool of money, it's roughly around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe. There's a formula there, but the math we did on this is somewhere around sixty to sixty-five potential students, and the lottery is exactly that, it would be, parents could submit and then we would have this process to go by, and that's, again, normally run by the business office.
We could grant enough money to fund it for sixty-five kids roughly? Roughly.
That's my understanding.
How many kids do we have now in morning scope? And would this run on-site or replace?
It would, morning scope would likely be subsumed within this operation and scope could be a viable provider if they respond to the RFP, which they likely would, but there are also considerations of having this off-site because there are logistical challenges and also other considerations, so there's a lot to this that we have to work through once we have an assistant superintendent of business.
Is there busing involved? Is that part of the grant?
I don't believe so, but I'm honestly not positive.
Do you know how many kids we have in morning scope?
Not off the top of my head, no.
We know if it's more or less than sixty-five?
It's less.
What happens the second you're Dr. Murphy, when it just is gone?
It's not known at the moment what happens in the future, but the question was about monies to support it ongoing, that's, I don't have that answer whether they would support it beyond this initial year.
So it wouldn't necessarily be manned by Hop-Hop teachers or Hop-Hop aides? We outsource it?
Yes, it's through.
Is that the way it's done?
Yeah, they have to be a certified provider, as New York State certified provider, and there's even some uncertainty who that provider is, this is something I talked about with Ms. Pirro before she departed, so this is my understanding.
And to Mr. Scrito's point, as far as we know, this is just a one-time shot of revenue?
That's my, yes, it's unknown at the moment whether they would.
It could be two to three years depending on the money. It could be two to three years and then who knows what happens after that.
Mr. Krafah? Do we have any recent feedback in the community as to the, you know, support for this or the need for it or what numbers we'd be looking at for the lottery?
There's been no survey, let's say, to the community, and we'll tell you that some questions have come in regarding it here and there, and there was a question that was submitted after the last board meeting. I know I'm normally waiting for questions and comments from the community, but I think this is probably the time just to reference it from Mrs. McCarthy who asked about this, and so it's come up a couple of times through email and through phone calls.
So is this money that's earmarked for this program or can be used for something else?
For this program.
And if you don't use it, it's gone?
Correct.
Even if we only get a year out of this, it's, otherwise we're just giving the money back?
Yes, some districts are operating with having a provider who's off-site, and in that case you are simply in some ways a middleman in terms of the transactional piece to say, our students are coming, we lay out, we get reimbursed.
And could it be subsidized for district funds?
Additional monies on top of that.
Yeah, if we find out we only have it for a year, but we want to.
I presume so, yeah, not as official, but.
Yeah, perhaps probably budgeted.
Yeah, we have a budget.
No, no.
Yeah.
Dr. Murphy? Dr. Murphy, does it have to be held in certain Hop-Hop or is it, when you keep saying a middle person, does that mean it can be held in Kings Park or how does that?
No, we look for a provider within our boundaries. What I mean is it could be off-site in Hop-Hop, but within Hop-Hop boundaries.
To be in Hop-Hop.
It could be onsite in our own classrooms, it could be off-site by a provider who's, you know, not on our campus.
And then what, provide busing from off-site?
Yeah, I'm not positive about that.
Scope right now is in our buildings.
Yes, we have a three and four-year program.
Right, so I guess it's a matter of finding a provider that's going to use that.
Yeah, so the RFP is the first step to see which providers say, hey, we'd like to respond to that, and then we'll review that, those responses, and see what's possible in terms of next step exploration.
Any further new business? Mr. Scrito?
Dr. Murphy, I know that the superintendents for New York State had met about a month ago, and I don't know if you're privy to this, but they talked about still having the students wear masks in September as a distinct possibility. Do we have any more information on how much longer I have to wear this thing?
I do not have any other information, I can tell you that I wasn't part of that discussion because I wasn't in the role yet, but in the assistant superintendent circles with BOCs, with really all of us, we are waiting for specific guidance, we're hoping that the state does not wait as they did last year to give us the guidance so we can get going with our plans for September, including what you're asking about, so I have nothing new to add at the moment.
And then parents have been asking me, Dr. Murphy, speaking of September, is our goal to be fully in school, sir, or will there still be some students that may work from home, sir?
Well, I think that's part of, that will come from the guidance we get from the state, so that's a big question still in the air about what we are going to be allowed to do, so right now, the current guidance, we are in a place where we could have all students in, but there are districts that would still not be able to have all students in based upon the distance requirements, so if they keep that language, the essential question is, well, what does that mean for even, if one district kids manage it and needs to have students either in a hybrid model or dedicated remote, what does that mean for everybody? So all of these essential questions and many more are kind of in the air and we're waiting for guidance. I do have some initial meetings because of my role here now with some key people locally, Gary Bixman from BOCs and others, so as soon as I learn more, I will, of course, share with the community. And we may send out a survey in concert with the guidance that we get so that we can tailor our plan and approach and philosophy to meet the needs of this community.
And the last question, Dr. Murphy or Mr. Tasman, I just want to, I had a couple parents, they're putting the gates around the middle school, that is for the paving that's going to take place?
Yes, they got started with that right away so that they can get that work done, you know, well in advance of September, so that's why you see the fencing, sandbag, I forget how they have them weighted down, but all the, Mr. Rosini got started on that, like the minute that students were gone.
Thank you very much.
I think that'll be all we see.
Dr. Krafah? Getting back to what Mr. Scrito was talking about before, is there any mandate right now from the state or the Education Department that we have to offer remote learning? Or is that something that was something that we did on our own? Or who's going to?
Well, there's no new guidance, so yes, this year we have the mandate to have different options, but, so until we hear something new, I don't know if there's a different legal opinion, the existing guidance is in effect until we hear something new, right?
But all the executive orders, you think the state of emergency have expired, and the executive orders also have expired.
So that was my next question, now that the emergency's been declared over, what happens? I mean, no one's really giving direct guidance even though that was ended or has ended, so does that include mask mandates, you know, now that that, you know, emergency's declared over, mask mandates? I know we found out that the plastic shields we're reusing, the studies show that they really didn't make a difference, so I'm assuming that's up to us, but I think it's really important that we need to, whatever we're within, you know, within our own decision, you know, making ability that we look forward and make sure that everything looks as normal as possible for September.
Absolutely, well, I mean, the goal is to get students back, I think what we're talking about here, there's this nexus between existing guidance that expired and us waiting for new guidance, which we understand was forthcoming from New York State Ed Department, but the Governor's Office made a decision at the time, this was sometime in June, that any guidance would be somewhat premature, that it's going to come from the Governor's Office. That's all hearsay at this point, but we believe we will get some clear guidance that will be hopefully unambiguous and, we don't know.
Hopefully before the first week in August.
Yes, exactly.
And my last question, I haven't found any in my research, any word on the state mentioning vaccines with kids that you know of?
Nothing's come out there.
Any other new business from board members? New business from administration? Questions or comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Yes?
I just wanted to know how we stand on the hiring process and who's picking up the slack right now with the three missing administrators?
So we've tonight approved salary and hiring subject to contract negotiation of our new business official. As far as the education piece or the curriculum piece and Carolyn's piece, I'll ask Dr. Murphy to address that.
So the timeline for the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, we just established and earlier on, Mr. Barshay referred to a subcommittee related to that, so we're looking to, we're looking to move on that timeline in the next week.
So Wendy, the position was listed, we've gotten dozens of resumes, we formed a committee tonight to help vet candidates.
Yeah, so we received over fifty resumes, we're going to be doing some screening soon and then comprehensive interviews. At the same time, we are working on the responsibilities from, that Dr. Probst was overseeing and making sure that nothing slips or cracks, so that includes the summer college essay writing and the application process, something went out to the community recently in reference to setting up those appointments, and we're having discussions internally about the makeup of cabinet in the coming weeks.
And one of the issues, Wendy, on the board's executive agenda is whether to and when to use interns for positions that haven't been filled yet, something we're going to Any other questions and comments? Yes?
Can I just answer?
Yes.
Since we talked about it, I wanted to recognize this is still a reality as in the audience, and I as our new assistant superintendent for business, as approved by the board event, just wanted to welcome you back to Hop-Hop.
She's our second best district clerk. Sorry, any other questions or comments from the community concerning, yes, Mr. Scrito?
I just wanted to make a comment and maybe to add just to, you know, just some future communities, but if we could have some presentations by the students talking about the last step of the meeting, or maybe the, yeah, the lab that is now in the high school, to set up the community as aware of what we're, you know, our kids are doing.
So we are absolutely going to be having presentations this year, one of my goals is to bring in, assuming that the board approves of this, but to have presentations with some frequency at board meetings to show off and highlight all the good work going on in our district. all the good work going on in the, in our district, uh, K-12, so that's definitely on the radar.
So, our meetings are structured, business, community, business, community, although we've gotten away from having a real distinction. So, the purpose of the community meetings is to have presentations. So, anything in general that the community wants to hear about, uh, just suggest it. And, uh, you know, if time allows and there's an appetite to do so, we'll schedule presentations.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Any other, uh, questions or comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Okay. Our next, uh, meeting is July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. I'll take a motion for an adjournment to go back into executive session to discuss, uh, matters leading to the appointment of a particular person or persons, negotiations conducted pursuant to our tailor involving UPSU union and non-alien contracts, as well as a proposed sale of real property. I'll make a motion. Ms. Salvia, uh, with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, uh, executive session will begin in seven minutes, nine o'clock exactly. Thank you.